Okay, thanks Mark. Good morning. We're here for our weekly Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, July 20th, 2016. We're in the Senate hearing room here at Courthouse Square and if you will join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so that nobody keeps laughing at me, I'm wearing a special tie this morning and it's in honor of the new organization we started last week because we discussed some new planning codes and we have something that has something to do with a thousand chickens. So I wore chickens in honor of a thousand chickens.
Mr. Chair, we won't really do anything but ridicule your chickens.
I know you won't, but it was the only one that matched my salmon shirt.
I was so pleased you got everything right. You knew when it was, where we are. Pledge was perfect and then you hit us with this.
With the chicken tie.
So it's a salmon shirt?
Well, I don't know.
Well, you could like, you could get a license plate or that.
What color, what color is the shirt?
Can we go to work or what?
Yeah, we can, okay. And there's people here waiting for us to do our important work today, so it's great to have some people. We have nobody signed up for public comment and we'll go right into the consent agenda and I believe it's your turn.
Chair Cameron, make a motion to approve the consent calendar this morning. Rather short, under Public Works, approve a resolution to initiate amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Flood Plane Codes and set a public hearing for August 31st, 2016. Approve the intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Transportation for $400,000 in incoming funds for Public Works to provide chip seal application on a portion of Highway 214. And I'm gonna go, just one little comment if I may. This flood plane codes and changes is being pushed through FEMA and fisheries and it could have big impact on Marion County and everybody here. So we talk about public hearings, not often attended, but I think people should attend, find out what it really means.
I'll second the motion. Yeah, we had a big discussion about that last week, I think.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second and any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, that's done. Our first action item is to consider approval of the sale of five tax foreclosed properties sold at public auction on June 23rd, 2016. Sign a contract of sale with each of the purchasers. Karen, you're here this morning and I thought, last time that I saw you here, we were...
Keep saying it's last.
Saying last time, so...
I thought so too.
All right, well, welcome. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. So we had our auction on June 23rd and I'm pleased to know that we sold all five auction properties at the auction. And I have a breakdown of the properties and what the minimum bid and what the final amount was. Only one went for the minimum bid, the rest were bid up, so we had quite an auction going on. And all five property owners had requested to enter a contract of sale with the county, so I have attached each of the contracts and have requested your approval and sign off on them.
Okay. Any questions?
No.
Not on the subject really, but I'm thinking, we don't normally get these auctions bid up a little bit. There, so is that just a function of how property's going here in Marion County?
I believe it is.
Mm-hmm.
Plus, the one that really went up was two acres in South Salem.
Okay.
And that, we don't get that very often.
Two acres with a septic tank and a well in my neighborhood?
Mm-hmm.
And I see that Mr. Fowler got it.
Yes.
Distrust. That's good. It's good for everybody.
All right, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve the sale of five tax foreclosed properties sold at public auction on June 23rd, 2016 and sign the contract of sale with each of the purchasers.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, that's taken care of, but wait, 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 you can't...
There's more?
You can't leave yet. We have one more thing that we would like to do. Karen has served Marion County for many years and has done a great job. And I remember meeting you when I coached your daughter in softball many years ago. That was a long time ago.
Long time.
And we have a little retirement certificate here, so why don't you, why don't you come up here and we'll present your...
Joe Lean when we need you.
Retirement certificate for you. I didn't think about it being in your retirement picture. Jeffrey, do you want to snap a picture here? Oh, Chris, you got it?
She must be there.
I'm trying to sneak out between the lines.
Congratulations. You got mad at people that put it on action item.
Thanks for doing the play.
Enjoy it. We forgot to ask you where your first trip is to.
Florence.
Florence, okay.
Florence, beautiful place.
Okay, so we're gonna move into our next action item is from the Health Department. Consider approval of an order to appoint Melinda Valiz to the Marion County Health Advisory Board with a term ending January 31st, 2020. Do we have anybody from the Health Department here?
Well, we've got Mary Beth on the next item.
Well, okay, wanna do them together? Okay, and also on item number three...
Over there.
Over to the side, yeah. Consider approval of an order to appoint Mary Beth Bell to the Marion County Health Advisory Board with a term ending January 31st, 2020 as well.
Thank you Chairman Cameron and Commissioners. My name is Patrick Vance and I, it is my distinct honor to chair your Health Advisory Board and to thank you for honoring our recommendation to appoint both Melinda and Mary Beth to the board. Melinda's been a past member, very active, lives in Woodburn, very active in health care and in the community in Woodburn. And Mary Beth is an old friend, worked for County Health several years ago, went on to bigger and better and other and different things and has come back as a member of our advisory board and brings all of that knowledge of the Salem community, Marion County, to our work on the advisory board. So thank you very much.
Great. Maybe, Mary Beth and Melinda, you maybe wanna come up and just...
Chairman Cameron, Melinda can't be here today, but Mary Beth is here.
Oh.
And I will relinquish my chair for her.
Okay.
Seems like old times.
Yes, it is.
Welcome.
But now you can't fire me by whatever I say.
I don't think we wanted to.
That was never in the plan.
Well, it's a pleasure to be back. As I was telling Commissioner Brentano when I first came to Salem in 1981, you may not know this, but I was appointed to the Public Health Advisory Board under Helen Murray, so here at the end of my career, I'm back in service to something near and dear to my heart.
So, just from my information, where have you been since you left Marion County? What have you been doing?
Well, I tried to retire and life got complicated for our family and I, so I came back in working as, in health advocacy, I would say, for community health under a grant for Kaiser Permanente as a health instigator where I organized the community of families with special needs children to advocate for services when a center closed that served about 400 families in our community. And since then have continued to work through our CCO and I chaired the Community Advisory Council and I have been advocating for healthcare transformation ever since and especially the inclusion of public health in that process.
Great. Well, thank you.
If I could, Mary Beth, so what were the issues in 1981 and I'm wondering if we've made any progress? Are they same issues today?
You know, it was a very different world. I was explaining to my guest, who I brought, who's visiting our family from Philadelphia. Public health and mental health were completely divided. We had a mental health advisory board and a public health advisory board. And disaster preparedness, emergency response, that was not a part of our world. It was straight epidemiology, disease prevention, and a large component of the public health nursing, which I'm glad to say has continued and expanded into more home health nursing programs for families. So really the, the, the largest issues were funding, of course, as, as always, to maintain those really important outreach programs in public health nursing and then disease immunization programs. So it was a much smaller world and of course, when I started, four days before 9/11, that world really changed. So I think the influence of 9/11 on public health as well as behavioral health and then again the integration of mental health are the two biggest factors that have changed in those 35 years.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything else?
No, just thrilled that you're back and appreciate your service and also appreciate all that you've done with the Coordinated Care Organization. I know your legacy lives on in terms of helping us get moving on some of the grant applications and processes that needed to happen and certainly a great advocate for consumers of service in that really critical...
Thank you Commissioner Carlson.
Great. Okay, so we'll entertain a motion.
All right, I'm not gonna combine them. There's ones, I'll just do, do it separately. I would make a motion that we approve the order that reappoints Melinda Valiz to the Marion County Health Advisory Board with a term ending January 31st, 2020.
Second motion?
Okay, a motion second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay.
And I would move approval of an order appointing Mary Beth Bell to the Marion County Health Advisory Board with a term ending January 31st, 2020.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Thank you for your service. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
All right. We gotta wait about 15 minutes, so... Can I read the calendar?
You could.
I wanna read the calendar. Can do that now. So I'm gonna read the calendar for this upcoming week. Starting this afternoon at 12:45, there'll be a tour of Ferris Lumber, at Ferris Lumber at 141 14th Street Lyons. Also this afternoon, there'll be a lunch meeting at Giovanni's Mountain Pizza, 146 Northwest San Diego Boulevard in Mill City. Tonight, there is a mid, at 4 o'clock, there's a Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Full Task Force Meeting. The location is at the Kaiser Civic Center, 930 Chumawa Road Northeast in Kaiser. Tonight at 6:30, Federal Lakes Recreation Committee Detroit Lake Meeting at the Gates Fire Hall at 101 East Sorbonne Street in Gates. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 21st, the City of Salem Marion County Meeting, location is at the Sassy Onion, here at 1212, or 1244 State Street Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, the 21st, at 10:00 AM, Mid Willamette Homeless Initiative Support Services slash Education Committee Subcommittee at the Salem Conference Room here at 555 Court Street Northeast. Tomorrow, which is Thursday, the 21st, still 11:30, parole and probation barbecue at the Marion County Sheriff's Office at 3950 Almsville Highway Salem. Tomorrow, Thursday, at 6:00 PM, Volcanos Group Outing at Volcanos Stadium at 6700 Field of Dreams Way in Kaiser. Monday, the 25th, at 8:30, we have calendar review here at the Silverton Conference Room. Monday, the 25th, at 9:00 AM, management update in the Silverton Conference Room here in this building. Monday, the 25th, at 11:00 AM, Board of Commissioners Chief Administrative Officer Meeting Executive Session if needed pursuant to ORS 192.6602 A B D F H I in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, July 26th, at 8:30, Community Corrections Board Meeting here in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, July 26th, at 10:30, Marion County Housing Authority Board Meeting here in the Silverton Conference Room. Tuesday, July 26th, 12 o'clock, the Salem Chamber of Commerce Executive Leadership Council at the Salem Convention Center, 200 Commercial Street. Wednesday, the 27th, at 9:00 AM, there's a board session right back here. And Wednesday at 2:30, Capital Community Television Recording at the CCT Office, 575 Trade Street Southeast. And also on Wednesday, the 27th, at 5:00 PM, Roy Deed Retirement Celebration, Marion County Health Department, 2421 Lancaster Drive Northeast, Training Room 1 A and B.
If I could, Chair.
Yes.
So you've gone through the list and the one that, to me, is showing a lot of anxiety and it, concern is the meeting up at Gates and since most people in the county won't be there, what are you hoping to accomplish and, well, maybe just a little bit if you could about what, what it is first of all and what you wanna accomplish?
So it's, it's the Quarterly Federal Lakes Committee Meeting. It was started, the committee, the Federal Lakes Committee was started back after, I think, 2001 when the lake didn't fill to try to build communication between the community and different departments such as Army Corps of Engineers, the state parks, the forests, city of Salem because of the water supply that they rely on from the Detroit. So that was started. So that's a quarterly meeting. This one is gonna be heavily attended because people just found out within the last week or so that their boats had to be out of the marinas at, in fact, Sportsman's, which is the, the co-op or whatever you call it across the lake, had to get out last week. Many of their docks never even floated. The Detroit Lake Marina, which is on the north side of the highway, their boats have to be out this Sunday. And the Canes Marina, which is on the south side of the highway, their boats have to be out August 7th. That notice got spilled on people. There is a lot of people who are upset because they thought the lake filled. Well, the lake never filled. It, it was, in my numbers, it was 14 feet below full pool at its highest level. I think somebody said it was 11 feet, so somewhere between 11 and 14 feet. Bottom line is, we're taking this tour today and you're gonna be a part of that as well with Congressman Schrader. We're going to meet with the marina operators and Army Corps privately. And we're, hopefully, the Army Corps has talked about, they have pushed forward with permits to allow the two marinas there to dredge, to actually lower their levels. Because if you look at the landscape up there, those, those docks sit up here on this level and then the rivers go down like that. And if they could lower the levels where those docks are in, they'd get an extra potential 20% of a season or in this case of a low water season, they would stay for however many weeks longer, two, three, four weeks longer. So if those permits are available and Army Corps allows them to do that, because it's not the Forest Service property, we've investigated that already, then it's a matter of, of getting the engineering done, getting a price, and then coming up with the, the emergency funds to help with that process of, you know, from economic...
Could that be done this season yet? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, what they, what they would do is do it when the lake's down, so it would be done in this winter. Yeah, that's what...
For next year.
Yeah, that's what the push would be, is to get it done so that next year, in the event of another low water event, they would be able to...
And dredge a channel out too, I assume?
Yeah, well, the channel's there because of the river, so it's already there. Just keeping the, the, the marinas at a, at a lower level. That would be the short-term, how do you wanna say it, not mitigation, but a, a resiliency plan for the, for the economic...
So, if I could interrupt, what about discussions to hold more water in the future and get off their template and look up the mountain, see what's there?
That will be a huge push from a lot of people in the room and if you follow, and I follow the curve all the time, I follow the water levels and I have since last year. I got involved last year when we had the extreme drought and we know we didn't have the water last year. This year, we had snowpack. We were at, you know, close to 100% of normal at one point in time. We had warm weather, we had rain and melted that snowpack. You can see the curve, the water goes up and they immediately try to take it back down because of this curve they have to follow and their flood management. They, then they depend on rains to fill it back up. Well, the snowpack was lower, so you're not gonna get a flood as much and the, bottom line is, is they, they don't hold back the water earlier, when it melts earlier. They just don't do it. They say they can't because of this flood curve. So, which was, excuse me, which was established in 1953 or something like that before radar and all these other weather things that we have. So that will be a point of discussion, but that is, to change that is a bigger issue. That's a congressional issue and they, they are mandated by Congress for flood control. Then they have the pressure of the fish. They got, they got sued on the fish side, so they had this bio in 2008 that shows when they have to have certain flows coming out of, it's not Detroit, it's Big Cliff and that's what people are, some guy today on Facebook said, "Well, why don't they lower Big Cliff? Because Big Cliff is always full." Well, if you look at Big Cliff, you can go up there one day in the morning and Big Cliff is down, you come home at night and Big Cliff is up. That's the regulating dam. So the flows coming out of Big Cliff are right now at 999 cubic feet per second and that's the steady flow. Detroit, it sometimes is zero, sometimes it's 2,000 because they're pushing water through for power or whatever they need to, to fill Big Cliff. So it's a complicated system and there's a lot of dams there, but yet this is the highest recreational use dam on the, on the system.
We just spent our week there and we love it, even if it was a long walk to the water. I know how important it is to people here in Marion County.
Yeah.
The most interesting thing is that, though, was to get them to look at the template and, and all the modern things we have, the tech, you know, technological advancements and that's, I sum it up and look up in the mountain and see what's there. They don't apparently coordinate with anybody else. They just go by a calendar and a graph. That's what it looks like.
They, they go by that, on, on that side, on the, and then they have, they have this legislative or this legal opinion that they have to follow on the outflow side. So the fill side is, is, they wouldn't get sued on the fill side unless there was a flood. That's where they would get sued because they didn't follow it. So they, they could squeeze it a little bit, I, in my opinion, right, but I'm sure that they won't.
Well, you, maybe you'll find out why they can't, but I, I'm hoping that that's where we can make things better.
But they will get sued on the, on the outflow side if they drop you a little...
I don't wanna flood either, but you're right. So if you see, if you've added a little water and see a storm coming, then you, I mean, this isn't that hard. Just somebody really watching the trough.
And we still got five minutes, so we're talking about an interesting subject, obviously. I'm passionate about this because of the, and I'm passionate about the fish issue. And you and I toured that, that, you know, with ODF and W and ODF and W said they want that lake filled too, because they need the water for the fish. And I was thinking on my way in today, I'm going, okay, that, if you look at the flows into Detroit Lake right now, they're under 500 cubic feet per second. If there was not a dam there...
That's what it would be then.
That's what it would be in the San Diego River. Yet we're flowing at 1,000. So I don't understand, I mean, I don't understand, we're not emulating or imitating natural conditions. So that's where I would have to have a biologist come in.
There ought to be somewhere in between.
Right. So what would happen to the fish right now if they were in 500 feet of water in the San Diego River?
Probably critical, probably be warm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that isn't where I wanna go either, but there must be somewhere in between.
So, so that's, that's the side that they have to follow and, and people don't understand that and so now that they've got this notice, they think Army Corps, or the other thing, Commissioner, is that people will drive up there and they'll see this water coming over the top of the dam and they'll go, "They're just dumping water." Well, what they're doing is they're mixing it for temperature control. And there's just a lot of improper information out there and hopefully we're gonna try to educate people and, and then have some mitigation and resiliency. That's what happened after 2001. They put that low water damp, low water ramp at Mongol after the 2001 part of the federal lakes so people can use the lake when it's at a lower level. That's a positive thing. So some positive things could come out of this, that's what I'm hoping. That's the question you asked.
Being up there last weekend, wife Tammy and I, you know, saw, here's a town, it's just was, you know, bustling and things happening, praying, and I know that all ends if there's no water.
Oh, and they had the craft fair going down.
Yeah, it was fun.
And this weekend, for example, if anybody's watching, you wanna come up, they got a waterski show going on.
Were you riding?
I'm gonna be on the top of the pyramid.
I thought you might.
Yeah. They got a waterski show going on and they've got, down at Canes, they got Never Too Late, the band Never Too Late, which is a local band out of state and they play, I think, at 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock and they have a customer appreciation barbecue and they, they really treat their people well up there, yeah. They moved, they had to move all that up though. That was planned in August.
Oh.
But they had to move it all, yeah, because of the levels. So...
All right.
We're close.
And we have about one minute.
Two minutes.
Well, all right.
9:28 sprint says anyway.
Commissioner Carlson, you must have two minutes worth. I've done all I've...
You let me, you let me go on.
All right, you're on still Kevin. We tried to help you.
No, I mean, you, 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 you let me talk a lot.
Oh, good.
So, yeah, Federal Lakes Meeting is gonna be standing room only tonight. I think John should be the one to lead it.
And I'm just jealous you guys get pizza, that's all.
Come on up. It's posted.
I know, but...
I know, the sheriff told me, 'cause, 'cause the undersheriff's taking the tour on the boat with the congressman and sheriff told me he had to be at your thing or else he would have been up on the boat with us, at your homeless task, task force, yeah.
What a dedicated task force.
He's a good one.
You gonna do that for me?
Do what?
Lead the meeting tonight.
No, I can't do that. I have, uh...
Oh, that's right, you have another meeting that you have to attend.
Unfortunately. You get all the fun.
Are you chairing it?
The meeting?
Yeah.
Uh, well, Dave White's introducing me and then I'm introducing, and I'll talk and introduce the congressman.
You have to maintain order and order.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna facilitate. That's gonna be a challenge. 9:30. Okay. So we are going to open a public hearing on, we're gonna go into Contract Review Board and have a public hearing to consider an order granting an exemption to allow the use of a CMGC solicitation as an alternative competitive process for a public improvement contract for juvenile courts expansion and administrative, administration remodel project. Camber and Colleen are here with us today. Thanks for your patience.
Good morning Commissioners and members of the board. My name is Camber Schlag and I'm the Contracts and Procurement Manager in Finance.
Colleen Kuntz-Chaifens...
Colleen Kunt Schafens, Business Services Director.
And we are here today to, um, have a public hearing, um, for the proposed juvenile courts expansion and administration remodel project. The Marion County Business Services Department Facilities Management Program has been authorized by the Board of Commissioners to proceed with the juvenile courts expansion and administration remodel. The county is finalizing a contract for architectural and engineering services for the project. The juvenile building was built in nineteen sixty-two and is approximately twenty-seven thousand square feet. The building currently houses over sixty employees. The administration building will undergo a major remodel with a primary focus of replacing the HVAC system, lighting, as well as interior renovations that are designed for a more collaborative and operationally efficient building. The court expansion portion of the project is intended to be a forty-five thousand, I'm sorry, four thousand five hundred square foot expansion of the existing court and associated support spaces. Site improvements for this portion of the project will include code-required parking, sidewalks, and American with Disabilities Act needs for the new expansion. The county's public contracting rules require the use of the traditional invitation to bid on public improvement contracts. Marion County Public Contracting Rule Section forty dash zero six one zero two identifies a construction manager, general contractor, or CMGC, as an alternative contracting method. The Board of Commissioners may authorize alternative contracting methods as an exemption for public improvement projects when justified as prescribed in the Public Contracting Code. So the county has identified the competitive CMGC solicitation method as the best option because of the critical nature of the work, which requires a greater emphasis on the general contractor's experience and technical ability. The CMGC process allows the department to select the best-suited firm for the project based on these and other factors such as experience, past performance, and pricing, not solely on lowest bid. In order to utilize a competitive CMGC solicitation for public improvements, ORS two seventy-nine C three three five requires the local Contract Review Board to make certain findings as part of authorizing the use of the alternative contracting method. The findings for the use of an RFP for a public improvement must demonstrate that it is unlikely that the exemption will encourage favoritism in the awarding of public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts. And the awarding of public improvement contracts under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the county or the public. For public improvement projects, agency findings must address certain additional factors set forth in two seventy-nine C point three three five and as outlined in the packet that you have before you. So some of the highlights of these findings are that the county anticipates multiple firms to submit proposals as would have been in the case of a formal invitation to bid process. The use of the CMGC methodology provides the most likely opportunity to acquire a specialized, technical, peer-reviewed, and cost-effective solution for the juvenile project. This project delivery method enables the firm to provide successful techniques and the integration of building systems into an existing public safety facility. The use of the CMGC methodology allows the county and the firm the ability to collaborate with the logistical details of moving building staff and operations with the necessary technical expertise that comes from equivalent projects. The juvenile department building functions as a public safety facility. A logistical approach must be taken with this project because occupants and operations will be moved from areas under construction and returned upon completion. As a result, there will be a strict timeline, and it will be essential to maintain the safety and functionality during this renovation project. The county will use the, its experienced personnel, including project management, legal counsel, and a project manager, procurement manager. The county will retain an owner's representative and architectural firm as consultants to assist and provide expertise regarding the project. And I also wanted to point out that, um, value engineering techniques may decrease the cost, because value engineering is a typical benefit of a CMGC engagement. By engaging the CMGC contractor early in the design stage, the county will maximize the potential for cost savings. The resulting contract from the CMGC alternative procurement process will be treated as a contract for public improvement as defined by Public Contracting Code and will be subject to all requirements for public improvement contracts, including but not limited to hours of labor, labor, retainage, and payment, subcontractors, bonds, insurance, warranties, peer reviews, as well as prevailing wage requirements. The use of an alternative contracting method will benefit the public by providing a construction methodology that results in the most likely opportunity to acquire a specialized, technical, peer-reviewed, and cost-effective solution for the juvenile courts expansion and administration remodel project. Using an alternative contracting method will result in an open environment that takes into account modern realities and practices that are consistent with the public policy of encouraging competition. Thank you.
We have, uh, nobody signed up for public comment? So, do you want, oh, a question?
Can I?
Yeah.
Thank you. So let me just ask, and this may be a really silly question, but when we went through the courthouse square process, the lengthy process, we had a lot of discussion about whether we were doing design-build or bid-build, you know, I, there were different methods. Where does this fit into that? So that, I think, my understanding of it, on a very simplistic basis, is we're not going to do, like, put out for bid and have low bids and sealed envelopes, and so this allows us to evaluate, right, through points and a much broader evaluation, which I'm very much in favor of. And then I'm trying to understand, once we have that contract in place, I'm looking at Colleen, because she probably can answer this question, the process that we would use in terms of moving from kind of the conceptual planning that we've done into actually the architectural design and, and the building of it, and particularly because, I'll say this in a very blunt and politically incorrect, we've been burned before in Marion County with, you know, cost increases and, and, and there's inevitably change orders, and then we set a budget, and all of a sudden we're more. And, uh, I know we've done guaranteed maximum price in the past, but they tend to make that really high so that we can stay within it. So what are your thoughts on that?
Well, the majority of, when you go from a design bid build, it just tends to ratchet up that price. With this, with a contract manager, general contractor, what they're going to do, the, the best approach is that they come in and they hire subcontractors, and then it's competitively bid, bid again. All those phases of the project are going to be competitive build, competitively bid. That's, that's the good part, because then we get more local people, too. That's the other benefit of this, is that we don't get these big companies coming in. It's not that I don't want them, but they don't tend to hire some of the local folks. That's what we want to encourage. And so part of that is, for us, it's really the economic development factor that we get to try and do that here. The other side of that is that we have, it's an integrated project delivery approach, where sometimes the risk is not shared. So this way, when we bring them in, the risk is shared by them and by us, and we're bringing them in early with the architects, as well as Day CPM, who Eric is here, if you have any questions for him as well. But part of that is to really collectively establish those milestones. What Camber was talking about was the value engineering. We're ahead of that. We're trying to stay ahead of that so that we don't have a ton of change orders, so we don't have some of those things to do. The other thing is that it really is that collaborative and communicative thing, that normally in a design bid build, they're separated from the owner. This way, we're bringing them closer. We have weekly, uh, meetings to talk about those things. We're coming to the board regularly to talk about the projects, give you updates, and, and have them on board to do that as well.
Okay. And just if I could comment, and Commissioner Brentano lived through this too, when we were doing the detention facility, the original one, um, I came in right at the tail end of that process, and it had ratcheted up much higher than what the budget was. So we had these long lists of things, and then we were like checking off, we're going to eliminate this, we're going to eliminate that. And then we ended up having to pay more money in the end, because the lights, they, they weren't bright enough. And so then, after the fact, we put new lights. They said, well, we don't need a kitchen, we just need a warming kitchen. And then, you know, a year later, it's like, well, you really do need a kitchen. So I just don't want us to get into a situation like that. I'm hoping that as we move along, and I think Commissioner Brentano has said publicly that he doesn't believe we'll actually stay within the budget, and that's a very difficult thing to do when you're, when you're in construction, but the, the more that we can, I guess, figure out a process where we're not surprised by.
Right.
Huge increases and then forced to do a prioritization process that we might regret later, uh, that would be the process that I would be, uh, hoping that we have.
I, I agree with you, and that's why we come to you monthly to try and talk to you about some of those unknowns that show up on the job, and we know they're going to be unknowns. And I think that's just how we come back to you and talk to you about those. And, and value engineering is not always decreasing something, it's really integrating those things that we can get more value from. So that's the way to look at it, too. It's not always just taking stuff out and making trade-offs, it's how do we do this better with the systems we have?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I, I think it's important to understand that this whole process has been budget-driven. Uh, we do have contingencies, like we did for the Health Department, and we ran into issues we didn't know about as we were fixing the Health Department building. But that's what the contingency is for. We don't, if, if we run into those kinds of situations like we did in the Health Department, then that's what the contingency will pay for. But we have told everybody in the process, we're going to stick to the budget, period.
We call it a target value budget, so when they come in, the companies are know that's what we're looking at, so.
So we have nobody sign up for public comment. Would you like to close? Anything else?
No, I, you know, the whole point of this is, is really just this integrated project delivery. It's really just try to keep this flowing, where we've got all the stakeholders involved early. We engage people early, trying to have those conversations, so we're not ahead of them. We're walking step in step with them, and that's the whole goal. So I appreciate your time, and I think that it's really just, uh, for all the stakeholders involved, it keeps everybody on the same page, regular updates, and we're working closely with Camber and her team to make sure we're doing things by the book.
Do we want to, um, do we want to do, since we're in Contract Review Board public hearing, do we want to do the next item as well, and then close the public hearing and make the motion on both?
No, we want to have two, two separate public hearings.
So if you're ready, then Chair Cameron, I would make a motion that we close the public hearing and we approve an order granting an exemption to allow the use of CMGC solicitation as an alternative competitive process for a public improvement contract for the juvenile courts expansion and administration remodel project.
I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay. We will, um, now open a public hearing on, um, an order granting an exemption to allow the use of a CMGC solicitation as an alternative competitive process for a public improvement contract for the Sheriff's Office parole and probation and Central District Office building projects.
All right. Good morning. We are here to request, um, an exemption from the Contract Review Board for the proposed Sheriff's Office parole and probation and Central District Office building project. The Business Services Department Facilities Management Program has been authorized by the Board of Commissioners to proceed with the Sheriff's Office parole and probation and Central District Office building project. The parole, parole and probation portion of the project is envisioned as a twenty-one thousand square foot of space in a single-story wood-framed structure which will replace the current parole and probation offices located in temporary buildings. Space areas will consist of general public areas, management, transition program, administration, support staff, domestic violence, and general supervision, sex offenders, and special services, operational support spaces, and common spaces. Site improvements associated with this project will include code-required parking, sidewalks, and American with, Americans with Disabilities Act needs. The Central District, District Office is envisioned as a ten thousand square foot of space in a single-story wood-framed structure that will replace the Sheriff's Enforcement Team current location, which is in the Work Release Center, or now the Transition Center. The new facility will be labeled as an essential facility. Space areas will consist of management workstations, enforcement operations area, general office area, cold case investigation, and common spaces. The county's public contracting rules require the use of the traditional invitation to bid on public improvement contracts. Marion County Public Contracting Rule Sections forty dash zero six one zero two identifies a construction manager, general contractor, CMGC, as an alternative contracting method. The Board of Commissioners may authorize alternative contracting methods as an exception for public improvement projects when justified as prescribed in the Public Contracting Code. The county has identified this competitive CMGC solicitation method as the best option because of the critical nature of the work, which requires a greater emphasis on the general contractor's experience and technical ability. The CMGC process allows the department to select the firm best suited for the project based on these and other factors such as experience, past performance, and price, not solely on lowest bid. In order to utilize a competitive CMGC solicitation for public improvements, ORS two seventy-nine C point three three five requires that the local Contract Review Board make certain findings as part of authorizing the use of an alternative contracting method. The findings for the use of an RFP for public improvement must demonstrate that it is unlikely that the exemption will encourage favoritism in the awarding of public improvement contracts or substantially diminish competition for public improvement contracts. And the awarding of a public improvement contract under the exemption will likely result in substantial cost savings and other substantial benefits to the county or the public. For improvement projects, agency findings must address certain additional factors set forth in ORS two seventy-nine C three three five, which are outlined in the packet that you have before you. Some of these highlights from the exemptions are that the value engineering is a typical benefit of a CMGC agreement. By engaging the CMGC contractor early in the design stage, the county will maximize the potential for cost savings. The county will benefit from the integrated project team's experienced knowledge and specialized technical expertise needed to properly maintain operations of a public safety facility in a safe and efficient manner. Experience performing construction activities around site occupants in a safe and effective manner is paramount. The C, the use of the CMGC methodology allows the county and the firm the ability to collaborate with the logistical details of moving building staff and operations with the necessary technical expertise that comes from equivalent projects. The Sheriff's Office functions as a public safety facility. A logistical approach must be taken with this project because occupants and operations will be near the worksite while the buildings are under construction. As a result, there will be a strict timeline, and it will be essential to maintain the safety and functionality during the project. And similar to the last, uh, to the juvenile project, the county will use its experienced personnel, including project management, legal counsel, and a procurement manager. The county will retain an owner's representative and architectural firm as consultants to assist and provide expertise regarding the project. The resulting contract from the CMGC alternative procurement process will be treated as a contract for public improvement as defined by Public Contracting Code and will be subject to all requirements for public improvement contracts, including but not limited to hours of labor, retainage, and payment, subcontractors, bonds, insurance, warranties, peer reviews, as well as prevailing wage. Do you have any questions?
Questions?
Just one. So it looks like we're moving these things along in tandem, and originally we had kind of talked about doing one in one year, one another, so it looks like, are we going to have the construction all at the same time then, in terms of juvenile and the?
It'll be, it'll be staggered. We're going to start with the juvenile court expansion, so that'll be in, in design stage, and then we'll be designing the Sheriff's Central District Office as well as the parole and probation, so those designs will be going on sequentially. And then the build depends. And then the build depends on the weather, it depends on that timing that we get in there. So it really depends on if we can get a shovel in the ground, we can get the foundation going, get get that going. And then soon as we get the Sheriff's Campus going, then we'll be able to start on juvenile admin design. So that, all those designs will be happening sequentially with each other and then the construction staggers within, I think, within six months of each other. So they're starting, they're starting, they're starting. So you'll be putting some shovels in the ground soon and doing some ribbon cutting ceremonies at the Health Building and then those others will follow within the next year and a half. So it's exciting to watch.
All right, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay.
I only know if you have questions for Eric. Eric's here to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for?
I don't, I'm sorry.
You act like you wish you did.
Yeah, thanks for coming, Eric.
Yeah, right, I really appreciate it. See, he was able to listen to our questions.
Yeah.
Take that into consideration. So we ready for a motion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the order granting an except, an exemption to allow the use of a CMGC solicitation as an alternative competitive process for a public improvement contract for the Sheriff's Office parole and probation and Central District Office building project, buildings project.
I'm going to second one comment. I don't know that, I don't recall that you listed that no one had signed up to comment either way. I'll second the motion.
I think I did. I think I said no, no, but thank you for.
I try to double watch.
Always covering my back.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just that I want to say that I know that these projects are really important to the citizens of Marion County and appreciate all the work and and effort that's gone in even to get to this point and the due diligence as we move forward and keeping us informed is really, really appreciated. So thank you very much. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Okay, so we've got those done and we have read the calendar. Is there any other, uh, comments?
We talked about a lot, but I just hope that movement forward is made up and.
Good things come out of that, hopefully. Yeah, all right, we will adjourn.